On to the pandemic, I have determined it's not practical nor prudent to meet in person. So these meetings that are being handled both electronically and by phone seem to be working well, and we're doing that under the authority of Minnesota statutes, section 13D point 021. Now, regrettably, one of the downfalls is we don't have easy opportunities for public comment as we normally do at this meeting. However, we encourage members of the public to email comments or questions to us at public.info@metc.state.mn.us. And we'll respond to your comments in a timely fashion. As usual, I ask council members who are willing to speak to wave their virtual hands or their visual hands, or just speak up, and we'll try to recognize you. Please state your name for those that are just dialing in on a video manner. So during the virtual nature of this meeting, we're going to have all business items voted on by an alphabetical roll call that Liz will perform. And if there's not any questions on that, we're ready to start. I'll ask Liz to, here is your little box, to call the roll to ensure we have a quorum.
Okay. Atlas Ingabretson? Barber?
Here.
Chambliss?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Gonzalez? Johnson? Lee? Liligren?
Here.
Lindstrom?
Here.
Musse?
Here.
Sterner? Bento?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Zuren?
Here.
Cherzali?
Here.
Mr. Chair, Johnson is here.
Perfect. Thank you, Judy. Did we miss anybody else? No. Okay. So thank you very much. First order of business is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Chambliss, motion to approve?
Thank you, Rita. And the second?
Cummings, second.
Thank you. Any discussion, question, corrections? Hearing none. Liz, please call the roll.
Atlas Ingabretson? Barber?
Hi.
Chambliss?
Hi.
Cummings?
Hi.
Gonzalez? Johnson?
Hi.
Lee? Liligren?
Aye.
Lindstrom?
Aye.
Musse?
Aye.
Sterner? Bento?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Zuren? Zuren?
Aye.
Cherzali?
Aye. Great. Thank you. Is, the next item is the approval of the minutes from our May 6, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
Cummings moves.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Wolf seconds.
Thanks, Wendy. Any discussion, corrections, amendments? Hearing none. Liz, please call the roll.
Atlas Ingabretson? Barber?
Hi.
Chambliss?
Hi.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gonzalez? Johnson?
Aye.
Lee? Liligren?
Aye.
Lindstrom?
Aye.
Musse?
Aye.
Sterner? Bento?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Zuren?
Aye.
Cherzali?
Aye. Thanks, everyone. You know, we have two really interesting items of information and discussion today, and it really goes to the heart, I think, of what Met Council, both our strengths and kind of our purpose. And this first is measuring the impacts from the COVID-19 on unemployment, income, housing cost burdens. And as I understand, this is pretty interesting data, and it continues to evolve. I know that this will be updated along the way, and we'll get a chance to think about what we hear, and then that might help inform both our work with other units of government, but also kind of recognizing for just general metro area that our research function is really kind of important and unique. So without laboring on too long, Todd Graham and Matt Schroeder are here to, and I see that you're on the screen, so I'll hand it off to you.
Cherzali, thank you for the welcome. I'm Todd Graham. With me today is, co-presenting is my research team colleague, Matt Schroeder. Let me know if there's any audio problems. We will discuss today how the current economic crisis impacts workers and households in the Twin Cities region. Our report includes discussion of disparities and impacts. This council is very aware that the COVID-19 crisis has multiple dimensions. There is the pandemic itself and its public health result. Then there is the response of the state and public agencies. Matt, can you advance the slide? The COVID-19 economic recession and business closures are a third dimension of what's going on. The social fallout from all this is a fourth dimension. But the economic collapse is the jump-in point of our report today. The outbreak of COVID-19 and our awareness of that in early March prompted everyone to rapidly, rapidly step back from normal economic activities. So certain industries ground to a halt, especially non-essential service providing industries. In Minnesota, many industries were closed by government order after the third week of March. And this, Matt, if you can advance the slide, this was nationwide, almost every industry, every state at the same time, one month, March 2020, which in economic terms is really extremely short period of time. For context, during the so-called Great Recession, the Twin Cities metro had a total job loss from the peak to the bottom of 117,000 jobs. It took all of year 2008 and 2009 to lose those 117,000 jobs. But the Twin Cities metro has lost three times that many jobs just during March and April of this year. So while the initial business closures were purposeful and temporary, we have now stumbled into an apparent recession. And because of the closure of hotels and shopping malls and factories and universities and office buildings and all of that, most Twin Cities workers are, like me, working from home. 400,000 more have been furloughed or laid off during the last nine weeks. 400,000 is the count that we're getting from the state's unemployment insurance system. Matt, you want to advance the slide? And people in industries are just starting to figure out what this recession is going to be, what it's going to mean for us. Where Matt and I work in government statistics space, our peer organizations have been super busy with fact-finding and explaining, and there are some very good reports and surveys and websites put together by organizations who we partner with. Just to name one, and this is in the upper left of this screen, that small graph on the left side is showing that consumer spending declined 40% between March 15 and April 1. And there's a good collection of indicators there at opportunityinsights.org. So these are our websites and reports that we've been looking at. Matt, can you advance the slide? So for our part, Metropolitan Council of Research is bringing you today a scenario analysis of what happens economically to the workers and households in the Twin Cities. And the questions that we want to address, this is really the thrust of it, is which fields of work are hit hardest, what job losses are going to do to incomes and household budgets, how much will the federal relief response smooth out that economic pain, and who is affected? In the second half of this presentation, Matt is going to discuss that we can slice apart the results by the type of worker, by income, by race. We cannot address today every disparities angle of the COVID-19 crisis. We're not going to get into access to healthcare, or exposure risk, or morbidity. Those are out of scope for the study we've put together. But instead, we are focused on employment outcomes, on income and income change, on housing cost burden, and on the online report will also have results on poverty rates. Our research design was to obtain job loss rates by field of work, and then apply to those job loss rates, apply those job loss rates to a representative sample of Twin Cities residents. Matt, can you advance the slide? And this allows us to estimate the impacts on our population. So the graph you see here, this is just the first part of the analysis, summarizing the employment collapse. Twin Cities metro had full employment before this crisis, or what was considered full employment. When Minnesota Dede releases its unemployment rate, probably in the next couple of days, I think you can expect to see that unemployment in Twin Cities will jump from 3% in the second week of March to about 15% in the second week of April. Now, this slide says 25% because we are presenting a higher estimate for early May, not the second week of April, but early May. And there's two other small differences. First, we include all the weeks of unemployment claims available. And second, we count some job losses that U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics does not. Namely, we count the impact to include people who say that they are still employed, but they were kept from work involuntarily in the week that they were serving. Now, we found this significant, there are millions of Americans who are in economic limbo. They feel like they are still in business and still have a job, but they're kept from it. So while the national survey would count them as officially employed but absent, our analysis is defining, is redefining those employed but absent as being out of work. So this is a slightly more expansive view of who's out of work. Matt, why don't you display the occupational results? The unemployment rates really vary by occupation and industry. The highest jobless rates are among food service workers and personal care service workers, where the jobless rates are about half of all the workers in those fields. And then we have a whole array of other service worker fields with jobless rates over 30%. And these differences across the fields of work really directly determine what households, what demographics are going to be most impacted. Because there is a difference in who works, what industries, what occupations, and how people are economically situated. Matt, you can advance to the next slide. So we've taken on this, what I'm going to describe as a scenario analysis, because it is a challenge, we know, for people to fully grasp who's impacted and to what degree. You know, if like me, I've only been recently in touch with four unemployed people, and I probably know more people unemployed, but I haven't talked to them since March. It would be really easy to miss that 400,000 metro residents are now out of work and on the sidelines. And that really, that impact is not equally distributed. It really depends, again, on one's place in the economy and household circumstances. So race is one characteristic for which we've compiled results. You'll see at the right side of this chart that white and Asian workers are experiencing out-of-work rates that are 20 points higher than normal. For blacks, the jobless rate is 29 points higher than normal. And for indigenous native workers, the jobless rate is 39 points higher than normal. Most of this rapid escalation of the unemployment is driven by occupational patterns, and service work is disproportionately work involving people of color. Matt, you can move ahead. This is an outline of our research design. This work started modeled after a report from the Chicago Federal Reserve Bank, I think at the end of March, and then we made modifications. And as the weeks have gone by, we've obtained better data, and that's allowed us to streamline the analysis, I think. The current population survey is the so-called Household Survey that the federal government uses to prepare the monthly jobs report. And the raw survey data from that became available to us last week. So at this point, we feel like we have a pretty good handle on it, and we were ready to come and present this to you. So our approach is to apply those national job loss rates to a Twin Cities sample of worker and households. And we are assuming that the economic shock here in the Twin Cities is similar to the national average. We think that's a pretty safe assumption. Then we subtract the estimated lost employment, the estimated lost earnings. We calculate new outcomes for workers and households. I described this as a scenario analysis earlier. Because we are calculating outcomes, and this will be Matt's half of the presentation, we're calculating outcomes for varying lengths of economic shutdown with and without the Federal CARES Act response. The measured outcomes of these scenarios are going to be resulting in unemployment rates, incomes, income loss, and housing cost burden. All of these results are being tabulated by occupation and by industry sector, race, and pre-crisis income quintile. Matt? Once more. Yeah, thanks. This scenario analysis is not intended to be everything. It is what we could bring today, granting that there's much that we don't know, and we do have a limited scope. So I wanted to highlight just, let's say, four limitations. The first thing is, we've assumed that workers either keep their jobs or they lose their jobs. They're working or they're not working. There's no gray area in the analysis that we've done. But we do know that that's, you know, clearly it doesn't represent every individual experience. One difficult situation you know is the roughly 10% of earners who are small business owners. Now, we don't have good real-time data for small business conditions. So we are assuming that their earnings losses are limited to 100% of their income. In real life, they could lose more than that. Most business owners have loan or rent payments that are due monthly. They have service providers that they contract with. They have pre-existing inventories. So it's a real gut punch for anyone who operates a business right now. And we do want to find the data that tells the story, so we are going to search for that. I will let our management know if we add this dimension to the study. A second research design decision, we have not included the impact of losses from illness, or hospitalizations and death. For this report, we were asked to keep the economic crisis in a separate lane from the pandemic and the public health response. So that's a scope limit. Matt and I are not prepared to forecast how many people will suffer from COVID-19. Whatever those numbers are, that will be an additional economic hit. If your household is directly affected by the pandemic, it can be devastating. Third limitation, our scenarios of economic shutdown are presuming that the shutdown ends after some definite period of time, after some number of months. But real-life experience, we now realize, is going to be a lot more complicated. It is maybe 20th, most industries can now resume operations, that's allowed. That's new from the governor's office this month. We're going to see if business operations in those industries can reopen, and if they can successfully adjust to physical distancing and public health precautions. Because even if they hang the open for business sign, in most industries, the production levels or service or sales levels are not going to bounce back quickly to what we consider normal. A fourth caveat, and this will be my last. This sudden COVID-19 panic recession is deep. We're talking about a collapse in employment of over 20%. When this much gross domestic product is canceled or lost or deferred, it does launch a downward spiral. We have lost or deferred consumer demand, consumption lost, producer demand lost, tax revenues, and so on. Certain industries are really in tough streets. Entertainment and recreation, travel, tourism are really threatened by what's going on. They're probably, I mean, it probably isn't apparent yet, but there is going to be a brutal bankruptcies wave that comes sometime this year. And again, business activity and sales are not going to be the same for those businesses that hang on. That is my dismal half, the first part of this report. My colleague, Matt Schroeder, is going to lead you through the scenario analysis and how it impacts different communities, different population groups. Matt?
Thanks, Todd. I wish I could say that my portion of this presentation would be less dismal. Spoiler alert, it's probably not. But it does at least shed a bit more light on the impact this is going to have. As Todd just mentioned, this is a really complicated situation. I think everyone that I've been reading, who's writing about this, kind of agrees that we're in completely uncharted territory. So trying to figure out what exactly these impacts are is a really tough thing to do. That being said, we wanted to show three different scenarios today to at least roughly quantify the effect of all these job losses based on what we know right now. And the first of these is the most optimistic, where we return to normal very soon, by the beginning of June 2020, and everyone basically goes about their business like they did before. There's a hit to incomes, but that ends soon. And so this is kind of the lower bound of the impacts. What damage has the pandemic already done? Next, there's a more moderate scenario. We figure out how to adapt to this over the summer. There's no second wave of cases, things are back to normal by Labor Day or so. And so there's a slightly longer period of economic pain, but that also kind of fades as fall arrives. And then finally, the more pessimistic scenario here is that this continues for another year. Perhaps there's a second wave of COVID-19 cases that necessitates another stay-at-home order. So this is really an upper bound on the pandemic's impacts over the next year. So what kind of damage could it do based on what we know right now, and also importantly, subject to the limitations that Todd just discussed? So those are the three situations that we're looking at to try to bring some numbers to this. And we can look at that first with respect to per capita income. So that's all the personal income across all society divided by all the people. And before the pandemic, that was around $40,500. Assuming things return to normal tomorrow, the hit to people's incomes will be about 3%, down to about $39,200. Using that more moderate scenario I talked about, it's about a 6% drop. And using the most pessimistic one, it's about a 13% drop. And I know that percentage drops are pretty abstract, so I'll try to make that a bit more concrete in a couple, in one way at least. The total personal income, once you multiply these changes in per capita income across everyone, you get to a total income change in what's already been about, according to our estimates, about $4 billion. And then if this doesn't end by next February, it would be around $16 billion total personal income loss. So this is a lot of money that we're talking about. Thankfully, of course, the federal government is responding to this with what's called the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, or CARES Act. This provides direct cash payments, as much as $1,200 per adult, $500 per child, though that total amount would phase out at higher levels of incomes. And most importantly, for our purposes today, it also provides expanded unemployment insurance benefits. So there are three components to this mainly. There's the $600 per week on top of state unemployment benefits for newly unemployed workers, and that's only happening through July 2020. But then the two other components go through the end of calendar 2020. There's an extra 13 weeks of state benefits that the federal government will pay for, for eligible workers. And then there's also unemployment insurance for workers who are normally ineligible for state benefits, primarily, like Todd mentioned, the small business owners, the self-employed people who normally don't qualify for state unemployment insurance. So the federal government is picking up the tab for that as well. We do want to acknowledge definitely that there are some limitations to this. There are a lot of people who are not eligible for unemployment insurance in the first place. These include undocumented immigrants, people without legal work authorization, high school students, temporary workers, people who just quit their job, not because they were forced out of the job. We also know that people have experienced a lot of difficulty and delays in obtaining benefits. I think Minnesota was one of the first to implement the system to administer the expanded unemployment insurance benefits. But we still know that it takes time to ramp this kind of change up. And then that's, obviously, there's been the effects of people who aren't able to access the direct cash payments as quickly as the IRS might like to move, or as they would like the IRS to move. So there have been delays in getting these. So we don't know that people are actually getting these benefits when they really need them. But for the purpose of this analysis, just to show it's possible, we are assuming that this gets fully and perfectly implemented. So here's the same chart from Slide 12, modified to incorporate the benefits of the CARES Act to allow for that on the right. So this is the same as Slide 12. And then adding in the benefits from the CARES Act, we do see that it more than offsets the effect of the lost incomes. Assuming that the closures end relatively soon, the net increase to people's, to per capita income would be about 2.4%. But again, over time, if this does continue through February 2021, the CARES Act, as generous as it is, can't fully make up that loss. Per capita income is really only telling part of the story, though. It's this kind of, these kind of numbers imply that every single person in the region, adults or children or workers or non-workers, are all sharing that economic pain equally. And in reality, of course, that's not the case. Some households are going to have one or more people who lose their jobs, and others have none. So we also wanted to look at the share of households that are losing income. And so without the CARES Act, we're going to break the region's households down into five different categories. Starting from the bottom, those who have experienced a large decrease, 25% or more, are in The, starting from the bottom, those who have experienced a large decrease, twenty five percent or more, are in dark orange. A small to moderate decrease of less than twenty five percent are going to be in lighter orange. No change will be in gray. And more increases will be in deeper shades of blue. Without the CARES Act, we're assuming that no one's income is actually going to increase, but that we're, based on the simulations that we've run, nearly a quarter of households will experience some kind of income loss. And the magnitude of that loss increases over time. So right now, only about three percent of households have lost twenty five percent or more of their total annual income. By next February, if if this continues until that time, that would rise to nearly a fifth of the region's households, that darkest income, that serves me, that darkest orange color. With the CARES Act, nearly one-fifth will have gotten an increase in their annual income. I I do want to say that this is not including the effect of the direct cash payments. So we know that all households, in theory, should experience some change in their pre-pandemic income just because of that. But just to show the highlight the effects of the job losses, we're focusing only on the unemployment insurance benefits. So the the CARES Act does go a long way toward making up the lost income. More households will benefit from it than than will still experience a loss of income due to job losses, but that does wane over time. And it can't completely make up the gap by, in this more pessimistic scenario. Though for about ten percent of households, it it will still then, still lift them above where they were, where they had been before. So we also wanted to look at housing cost burden rates. So we know, and we've just seen, that households are losing income, especially without the CARES Act, but are they losing enough to push them into housing cost burden? So paying thirty percent or more of their income on housing. So this chart is set up like the per capita income slides, showing the pre-pandemic value in that horizontal line across at about nineteen point seven percent. Assuming things return to normal, basically tomorrow, we would expect that rate averaged across the year to be at about twenty one point three percent. Using the more moderate scenario, at about twenty three point nine percent. And then finally, that pessimistic scenario, at about twenty nine point four percent. So anticipating large increases in housing cost burden if, without, in the absence of the CARES Act. In reality, the the CARES Act, as with per capita income, does do a lot to slightly more than offset, on average, the income declines and lets people out of housing cost burden on net. But assuming that this does continue for most of the next year, it can't go all the way in limiting that damage. And I do want to emphasize that these are just, these rates shown here are just for homeowners. In reality, the rates for renters are far higher. So on the on the order of fifty to sixty percent instead of twenty to thirty percent. But the same general pattern still applies. So we also wanted, as Todd mentioned, to look at how disparities by race and ethnicity changed or might change over the course of this year. We have tracked these indicators like these for several years now, and so definitely wanted to figure out how this massive disruption to our economy might affect them. But beyond that, as Todd pointed out, we really need to look at this because how this pandemic hits you in the first place depends on where you were situated beforehand. And again, as as Todd noted before, you do see the the occupational differences and more reflected in the job loss rates across different racial and ethnic groups. So according to our our simulated estimates, about forty two percent of indigenous workers have lost their jobs compared, and thirty two percent of black workers compared with just twenty percent of white workers. And these numbers climb, too, when we think about the share of people who are affected by a job loss in their household. So more than half of all our indigenous residents in the region have lived with someone who has lost their job or have lost their job themselves, compared with just thirty three percent of white white residents. I I do not want to minimize the the damage of of anyone. I mean, a a twenty percent job loss rate for white workers is still astronomical compared with what what we're used to. That's why we, I, so I I I mentioned this more to highlight the the extra burden on workers of color and residents of color, rather than to minimize the the burden on white workers and households. So looking at changes in household income across these these different groups, how these job losses have affected household incomes, again, looking at households in in bins of changes to their income from a large decrease in darker darkest orange to a larger, largest increase in deep blue. And so according to what we've produced based on what we know right now, about forty percent of indigenous households have experienced some kind of income loss. And I I should mention, too, that this is kind of, just to get a kind of middle-of-the-road picture, this is assuming that business closures end by September 2020, so that more moderate scenario. But that that more than a quarter of indigenous households will have suffered a twenty five percent or more decline, decreased their household income. And then moving through the rest of the households, again, higher shares of households of color are experiencing, will have experienced income declines according to what we produced. Though, again, of course, these are really high rates regardless. Looking at the effect of the CARES Act, you you've probably seen articles in the news about how unemployment benefits are are often above replacement wage level. And so we see the effects of that here, too, as well, that the the groups that have suffered the most from job losses are both because of the their act, their the access to unemployment benefits, as well as their relatively lower incomes to begin with, getting, experiencing more of an increase in household incomes, again, assuming perfect implementation, which we know is not the case. And then finally, we also wanted to look at how this will change disparities in housing cost burden. So given that under the CARES Act, we are anticipating, at least, that, on average, the and on that, the incomes of households of color will increase relative to their pre-pandemic levels more than for white households. We wanted to see, would that change disparities in housing cost burden? So showing first here the the white rates at about twenty five percent of white households falling into that cost burden category before the pandemic, and at about twenty three percent afterwards. And these are just averaging out homeowners and renters alike, so. And this, as I mentioned in the note here, these this this after column, again, assumes that moderate scenario, that the business closures are ending by September 2020, and that all eligible people are receiving the full benefits from the CARES Act. And so I'll show the these other groups, starting off with the the white baseline in blue, and then adding on the the surplus of the the excess rate of cost burden for the different groups, so that the indigenous cost burden rate is about fourteen percentage points higher than the white rate. Under this scenario, the moderate scenario with the CARES Act, that difference would shrink to about twelve percentage points. And we see similar declines in those disparities in the the green, the green portions of those columns across the different racial and ethnic groups. These are small declines, but we do see them, at least. I don't mean to say that this is solving in any way the the problem of racial inequity in our region. Housing cost burden levels for households of color are still very, very high. But at least wanted to highlight the, at least the potential for how much governmental action can can move the needle even even slightly. So kind of zooming out to think about how this will change disparities. We have seen that job loss rates are higher for people of color. The CARES Act appears to reduce those disparities in housing cost burden. And there's in slides that we that we haven't shown today, poverty rates and other measures as well. Though, as I pointed out, this is really just a temporary thing that is limited to the the duration of the Federal CARES Act. And so the we are anticipating that the disparities will remain large regardless, and the conditions won't improve substantially for people of color, particularly since they have less access to their own private safety nets like retirement accounts. They have well-documented greater exposure to health risks and equally well-documented disparities in health outcomes. So with that, I will wrap up. As as Todd mentioned, we are hoping to, hoping and planning to continue refining this over time with hopefully data on business losses and other things. We are curious to hear your thoughts as well, though, as we think about the best way and the where to focus our energy at this point on the most fruitful questions that that might help generate some ideas for policy remedies. And so I know that Todd and I are both happy to take whatever questions and comments you have and feed them back in to keep improving this analysis. So, thanks.
Well, thank you so much, Matt and Todd. This is I was going to say rich data, no, very unsettling data, and it shows the impact. I I might just start in and ask, you know, clearly, the CARES Act was really important. It's not enough in many, in in a number of measures, but 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 my question is more about duration. It seems like the both the CARES Act, the the Payroll Protection Plan for businesses, small businesses, and then then these direct checks and the unemployment benefits. There's a time, it seems like they're a pretty short time window, and so the the real what are we going to experience here over the next six months? I mean, the those graphs that kind of show a best case, which is unlikely, because it's in a matter of a couple of weeks. September, which still might be optimistic. But if we look at this over the course of the next couple of years, without additional federal benefits above beyond what we have now, i- is that a cause of just even more dramatic concern?
Chair Zellinger, this is Todd Ram. I'll 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 start, and then Matt can continue. I I I think the CARES Act federal relief that the members of Congress had in mind that this probably wouldn't last farther than than summer. I, we're we're now in a situation where the federal government has put money in people's pockets. The we've accidentally accomplished universal basic income. But it hasn't, it it hasn't mitigated the economic risk. We are, as I said before, the diminish, the diminishment of of consumption, of consumer spending, of production activity, all of this is going to cause a downward spike spiral for businesses and for the infrastructure that those the infrastructure that those businesses provide. So when the pandemic is over, there's going to be some real economic damage and and pieces to pick up. And I I think that's the, that's the aspect that's that's most worrisome.
Sure. Well, let's open it up. Does anybody have any questions or or thoughts about where we should, we should take this with additional data?
I have a question.
I see Riva, sorry. Yeah, and then Molly.
Thank you. I I have a few questions. One is the CARES Act money. Is that approved through the kind of the scenario if we end up still having to support families financially into February? Is that federally approved up to this point, or will we have to ask for that at that, at that point? Or will society or the legislators have to ask for it?
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Shambless, this is Matt Schroeder. The the CARES Act, the the six hundred dollars per week in extra unemployment benefits will phase out after this July. The other components of that expansion of unemployment insurance phases out after December. So unless there's some extension, then that will kind of go off cliff, I guess, at the end of 2020. And that is incorporated into our scenario, so that the January and February in our of 2021 in our numbers would reflect no federal benefits at all at this point.
Okay, and then, if I may, I have a couple other questions, and then I'll just get it all in there. I was curious about the debt burden and what type of debt gap would be created by this pandemic. I know we're focusing in on unemployment and the income gaps, but for people who, you know, are delaying the rent, for people who are taking out loans for the small businesses, you know, I think that kind of goes back to, and is linked to the bankruptcy issue that that we're expecting to be a result of in the fallout. And you don't have to answer that, but that's just something to think about. I guess the response, I would, I would recommend that we we look at mitigating the way that it has been presented to us today in terms of having support through the CARES Act, but also looking at what we can do as an organization in terms of unemployment, income and housing to make sure that we mitigate the burdens on those that are most impacted, as described in the presentation, the the these small businesses, the ethnic and racial groups that already had a burden that, that burden is going to get greater, so maybe prioritizing in that way. And then requesting from an organization that is collecting this data and supporting our residents in the metro area, in the area of unemployment, income and housing, to have the Metropolitan Council extend the support beyond July through a formal letter. So that that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Riva. I think there we certainly, as a council, and although I I'm not sure what our past practice is, to write a a letter to our legislature or maybe our federal delegation in support of additional stimulus or, in fact, you know, additional extension of of CARES Act benefits going in the future. That's something I I think we could, we could do, but it is, I think, in the hands of the, as I understand, that the really the federal government benefits at this point. We haven't counted, really, the state, which doesn't, has the ability to print monies or borrow money as it is, as the federal
Maybe a trickle-up effect with the legislators.
Is there another comment or questions, Molly?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I I'm wondering, this is really interesting information. Of course, we know it in in general, but to see it presented in this way, I think it's very helpful, if not very disturbing. But given that the the whole pandemic is of unknown duration and depth, how often can this information be presented in an updated fashion? Because we're really quite early on in understanding what may, what the outcomes may be, and this information can be very, very useful to us in crafting how we move forward and how we can address many of the issues that that will come to the Met Council based on this kind of information and so forth. So I'm wondering how often we can get updated information and how we might be able to use it to craft our policies moving forward.
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Kuntz. The, this is Matt Schroeder. Thank you for that question. We are asking that that same those same questions as well. I think there's, I think in the lead up to this presentation, we were kind of wrestling with the tension between the the need to respond to, in almost real time, to constantly changing research and and data and developments. research and and data and developments in this society wide dynamic. And so the tension between that on one hand and also wanting to make sure that we are producing high quality numbers that we can stand behind. I think our our current intention is to update this once a month as as we get a lot of the the most reliable data sets that we tend to use in this analysis come out monthly. And so there's kind of a natural natural production cycle there. But also, this allows us time to kind of, yeah, reflect on on exactly what we can do. We are also in the process of putting together an interactive visualization that will be on our website to to have that there. So this can also kind of evolve over time, but can also, we hope, have a longer shelf life than a a presentation like this.
And I note that Todd has put the online link to the data on our website in the chat functions. If you're looking, take a look at that.
So just a quick little follow up comment, I guess. Again, thank you for that. And again, it it affects everything we do and in in every area that the Met Council touches. And and I think everyone realizes that it's unfolding so quickly that it changes from day to day, week to week, month to month, and it's very hard to keep up. So I really, really appreciate the effort to put this information out there and keep us sort of apprised of of the changing landscape as we move forward, because I think it will be very, very beneficial. So thank you very much.
Great point. Anyone else? Thoughts? Questions? Wendy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things. I had Todd send me some spreadsheets with the data so I could take a little deeper dive. And I just want to remind everybody that when you lose your income, whoever you are, it's devastating. And we've got people who are losing all of their income in some cases right now. Looking at the numbers for people who have lost their jobs, 29% of the people who have lost their jobs are people of color, but 71% are white people. So given that we have such a large percentage of white people in our region, I don't want to lose sight that we've had more than a quarter of a million white people lose their jobs. I I understand the disparate impacts by race, but there's a really huge number of white people also, and we need to be compassionate to all of the people who have lost their jobs during this this event. The other thing is, I I want to give a little sort of warning of what might come with recession. When we had the recession, you know, more than 10 years ago, a lot of the the occupancy for apartments went down dramatically because when people don't have an income, then they move in with extended family and whatnot. So we may see a huge increase in vacancy rates in apartments over time. And we may also see a drying up of the tax credits that we normally rely on for funding affordable housing developments. That happened the last time. When businesses aren't making any money, they don't need tax credits. So then the value of those tax credits for the nonprofits or government agencies that are building affordable housing tends to go down. That that was a big deal during the last recession, and I wouldn't be surprised to see it happen again in this one.
Charlie, you're muted.
Mute.
Okay, I'll repeat myself. Sorry. Thank you, Ray. I was just saying we have time for one more question and but this won't be the last time we talk about this data or this issue. I have the feeling, but and thank you for those comment. Councilmember Wolf, because that's that's really something to be be mindful of what we're what we're heading into. Councilmember Vento.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a dog in my lap, and he'll hopefully try not to participate in the call. But I I'm curious as to whether or not we have the ability to gather additional data regarding other cost factors for for Minnesotans. I've recently read an article about the significant increase in the cost of food, which is going to just further exacerbate the the hunger issue. But utilities, those types of costs that that add to the burden and and add to the struggle. So if there's any way in the future of maybe getting some of that information, I think it would be helpful.
Right. Thank you. I think I we can maybe have some time at the end, but I want to make sure we have enough time to address our second issue. I see a D Tomer here who's joined us. So D, welcome back to Minnesota. But this is really an update on a on our Economic Value Atlas. And and, you know, for those who haven't been following this, this is really important work. And I think it really hits at the heart of some of what we just discussed. And and although we started it well before the pandemic, it has, I would say, even greater relevance now. So I know it's going to be introduced by Dan Markel. So Dan, welcome. And we really look forward to hearing it and and and, you know, following up on that discussion.
Thank you, Chair. It's silly and council members. Greg is sharing content, which is very useful because then I can read my notes. And let me know. I don't have a dog or children in my house. But I do have a neighbor with a lawnmower. And if that becomes a problem, let me know, and I'll I'll address it. Again, my name is Dan Markel. I'm a planning analyst in community development. And I'm here to provide, to some extent, introduction and an update to a project that has been starting up. It's been a little bit in the background, but it will be coming forward in the coming months. As we get into the discussion, we have a number of project friends in the meeting who can also provide additional perspectives. A D Tomer has joined us from the Brookings Institution. Joel Hudding, I saw is on the call. Todd Graham also knows a lot about this. And Michael Larson is has been integral in the discussion so far. So as we get into discussion, they can join in. The Economic Value Atlas is intended to be a tool to support the kind of conversations you were just having. What can we do about it? And how does the work of the Met Council affect the economic dimensions of the region? How can we have a closer discussion about economics when we're talking about our infrastructure investments? The council does make big infrastructure investments, and a lot of times people see those as the big prize. Transportation investments, sewers, housing investments, and those are super important for sure. But in the planning functions of the council, our work is often more in the early point in providing data and analysis like you just saw, in doing convening and providing tools to have great discussions about those infrastructure investments. And that's what the Economic Value Atlas is intended for. Today, I'll just be sharing the overall vision for the effort. Take any of your thoughts and advice and work them into the project going forward. Next slide. This is an overview. I'm just going to be giving the basics. We are going to invite your thoughts and discussion at the end of this. There's only nine slides involved, so we'll get there pretty quick. And we intend to take this input as we're shaping the project right now. Next slide. What is the economic value analysis? There are really two interrelated parts. The thing that's going to gain a lot of attention on the broader public is an online interactive tool, a kind of portal that will be a very visible and engaging product. It will include on the fly mapping using data populated from our own region to to bring to technical work. And we'll be using data assembly and coding this this portal as we go forward. So this can be very visible. But it sits on top of something that is at the heart of planning, which is the engagement process designed to clarify the values that we want to embed in in our investments and to foster collaboration and teamwork in the region. So broadly, I'll be talking about those two things as the technical track and the values track. Next slide. The Economic Value Atlas really started in 2018 as a partnership between the Brookings Institution and Portland Metro, the Portland Metropolitan Planning Organization. They they worked to provide a data picture to support alignment between planning, infrastructure, and economic development. And I expect we'll have some discussion about that. And I've included some links at the bottom of the slide here. I'll try and put them into the chat box as we go forward. And A D was centrally involved in that project. So when the moment comes, I hope that he'll step forward. Next slide. So Portland was version 1.0. Now we're working on Economic Value Atlas version 2.0, which includes development of a national cohort. We have signed up, Kansas City has signed up. And there's so ongoing conversations, I think, with other regions that would like to sign up, but their situations kind of prevent them from doing this. But there's going to be a lot of interested eyes on what we're talking about here. In the technical realm, this cohort means we will be talking with these other regions about how to populate this tool with our own data. We're also in version 2.0, using new coding tools for the programming to make the the construction of these easier for folks. I think Portland, we're going to learn from Portland's, I'll say, experiences, both good and bad in the technical realm. In the values realm, this means setting up discussions to establish the shared values we want. And if you recall, there's a very rather large project going on right now, the Regional Economic Framework, that includes Greater MSP. This this part sits on top of a lot of other work that's going on. We kind of have a running start at the values part of the discussion. And as we go, we'll be comparing notes and sharing efforts with these other regions. Next slide. So who else going to be involved? I mentioned the regional economic framework. We're starting with the partners and the content that's being generated in that. I understand that that's aimed at being adopted at the end of June. So we're we're picking up where they leave off. We will add other participants as necessary to flesh out what the technical and the the values part. But as a core, we've got Met Council staff working on this, Brookings Institution staff, Greater MSP staff is going to be joining us from their perspective. And then there's, of course, a whole host of regional partners that you can imagine interested in this work and useful to to participate. They'll be organized largely into those two teams, the values team and the data or technical team. And when I say teams, I mean, the folks who are going to be working as a significant part of their their day on this on this project. There's a raft of stakeholders that will also be involved and will be developing a kind of engagement plan for all the stakeholders at the various levels as we go forward. And that's what we're just framing up right now. Next slide. Lots of things are going to happen. This work will happen over the next, say, year and a half or so. Right now, we are planning out the project, identifying those teams and stakeholders, inventorying the existing efforts. A lot of that happens under the banner of the Regional Economic Framework. And soon we'll be having kickoff meetings for our local work teams. In summer, we'll start coordinating with other regions, beginning the the first drafts of various products and start collecting and organizing the data. There's a there's a kind of, this is like magma, the volcano of of information is going to come here. We'll be collecting all that magma of data, starting about now going into the summer. Fall, you'll start to see the results of that work, the drafts of policy goals, continuing the data development. You might see some beginning of the software popping out. And then we go into sort of the testing phase where we get to develop policy applications, explain to people how it works. And then really in this, in 2021, do policy explorations and implementation, and then create a final presentations. There's not enough room on this slide to show the additional boxes that would appear. But one of the reasons we're doing this is to to inform the development of the next regional plan. This time around, we have technical tools available. We have people available. We have data available and partnerships available to really set up the data discussion leading into our next round of system plans and regional plans. Next slide. And that's that's the vision. That's the overview. I am curious what questions you have, what potential you see, what comes to mind, what roles would you like to play? You will be, to the extent you're willing, conscripted into those values discussions at least, and seeing the products of the reviews of the technical discussions. And other than that, I will take notes. I see D's video is on, and so we're here for your pleasure. Thank you.
Yeah, let's open it up. Robert, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. A comment and maybe kind of a suggestion. I'm a huge supporter of the Economic Value Atlas. I have been since I first learned of it. I love that we're part of 2.0 and that we're developing a cohort model. I just see a lot of value there. And I think it's another very legitimate way for the Met Council to step into the realm of economic development and be a presence there in in our region. So so I just wanted to say that. And then the other part, and this is more of sort of amusing or maybe an opportunity for us to explore how this does relate to our tribal consultation policy. Now that we have two tribes represented within the seven colonies metro area, SMFC and Prairie Island, here's a an important way to engage with the tribes in a conversation about economic development that is, I don't want to say not official or quasi official, but you know, not statutory. Maybe that's it. And so as we move into the next iterations and generations of planning, com planning, system planning throughout the metro, and we're going to be trying to figure out what our tribal consultation policy means in that context. I think this is a good, you know, maybe starter set or a good trial. So so I would look forward to supporting any efforts in that direction. Thanks.
I I might just jump in for everybody's awareness that with the regional economic framework as that we discussed a couple of weeks ago, we've initiated a kind of a consultation process with those two tribes, but also kind of made a very brief presentation to all the tribal nations on a on a phone conference a couple of days ago, just to build awareness, help set up a more formal consultation. But that's a good question. Thank you. I don't know if any staff have any other comments on that issue? If not, we'll note that and get back to it. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just for clarification, so Greater MSP is a partner in this process. We'll again do the overlay of 15 counties while we're still working in our seven county space. Is that correct?
We're in the seven counties. Did I get that right, Dan?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Councilmember. This this does have an interesting intersection with the regional economic framework. That is 15 counties. This project, partly because we have the data available for this, is the seven counties. Whether it grows from there is not something I've even heard about being discussed.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, the only thing I would mention, I have one other thing to bring up, but pulling off of Robert's question. So the Malax Band is also part of the 15 county metropolitan area. area. And so even though statutorily and through agreement in our seven county, we'll be working through the agreements. I just hope, I don't know how much Greater MSP or the other partners are briefed on those types of relationships and communications, but I just want to make that point that there's that band as well outside of the seven county. I'll just pivot a little bit on this. So this is great. You know, the timing is good, the partners are coming together. But in partnership in that first slide and maybe throughout some of the presentation, we talked about stakeholders, we talked about, I can't remember the words because the slides aren't up anymore, but I'm going to just ask, like, so is Center for Economic Conclusion in on the front end? Are, you know, that's their, you know, purpose is to, you know, engage in economic opportunity for all people and specifically for equity for people of color? And I just, I just want to make sure that as we, and I'm trying to understand the values. So we've got Thrive 2040, Greater MSP has the region's vision and values. You know, every partnership organization has all of that. So are we, are values, have they been set? Or I'm trying to understand that and who decides what the values are. And the reason I'm just bringing this up, and it's not to be negative, I'm trying to be just cautious in that we don't get too far down the path. And then, you know, we haven't, we haven't engaged, you know, everybody who needs to be in the process early enough. So I'll just, that's kind of where my thought process is, is how do we make sure that we're being inclusive on the front end so that when we're talking about values and we're talking about impacts and we're talking about future orientation, and we're doing this as we're going through crisis and economic upheaval, you know, how do we make sure that the groups, organizations, and people themselves are thoroughly engaged in the work?
Mr. Chair, council member, thank you very much. The, I've gone light on the participation in this presentation. Number one, I think you can, you can count on the fact that if anybody was involved in the regional economic framework, they're going to give an invitation to this. And you will be wanting to pay attention to the engagement plan as it comes out. And it's, it has that spirit behind it that you just articulated so well. We're also borrowing the values word from the Portland discussion. So it is kind of funny to talk about how many definitions of value we have. That's what the discussion this summer, this fall, is going to be made up of. So let's keep that discussion going.
Just briefly, too, I think that all sounds good, but I'm going to keep my skeptic hat on because I want to make sure that the lists that we don't see and the process when it comes to us doesn't come at such a point in time that we don't lose ground or we've missed. And by the we, I don't, you know, we in the broadest sense possible. So, you know, I was in another meeting today and I just, there's a lot of activities and a lot of efforts, and we talk about engagement and stakeholders and the process by which we engage. And it seems still that with all the right effort and all the right intentions and all the experience we bring, we can still be doing better. And I say that with great respect for staff as they're driving all of this.
And if I could just echo a little bit what you're saying, Judy. And I think those of us who received a letter from Tawana Black, you know, 24 hours ago, I've already been in a number of conversations to ensure that not through Greater MSP, but through our direct engagement with the Center for Economic Conclusion, as an example, is fully, you know, integrated with both our staff and our work. And I think that when we think about the regional economic framework, that is not a, and shouldn't be, this is the defined work, here's the values, here's the economic plan. It is more of a framework to be, to actually express our intentions to keep going and develop that. So I think we need to see it as more of the beginning rather than here it is. And I think you make a great point that we, with great humility, need to ensure that we're being as open and understanding and as inclusive as we possibly can be. But I think there should be, and there will be more conversations about how we approach that. With regard to tribal consultation, there's a little nuance here with the MSA, which is Greater MSP's kind of geography, and ours, which is seven counties. Regarding economic development, you know, agencies are often, there are existing, you know, you know, those agencies in the, in the counties beyond our footprint. But the seven county doesn't have one. So we're kind of, you know, by setting up this regional economic framework, kind of provide an opportunity for the seven counties and those two tribes. And also, as an example, our consultation may be for those who, and I actually talked to, you know, tribal chair Benjamin yesterday, that they have significant investments in this metropolitan area. So what can they do with their current investments in the metro area to access some of this EDA funding, you know? So I think the more we kind of peel this back, the more nuanced and complicated, and we should be afraid of getting it back more. And because this is all about providing a portal for opportunity, not to pick one or the other. And I think that you raised just, you know, a really important, you know, kind of almost attitude that we need to be kind of taken on. So, thank you. Any more questions? A.D., you look so great there. And so you've got to make a few comments here on your fine work. I've admired it in Portland. Lynn Peterson tells me she's got it all figured out, and I question that. But I think we're going to have an opportunity to kind of, maybe, you know, is this going to be different? Is it going to be deeper? How do you see this as evolving from what was initially done in Oregon?
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. And great to see you again. And thanks to the council members for allowing Dan to present and for letting me listen in on the inside. We don't often get to see this perspective, so I can't.
We're pretty transparent here in Minnesota.
Yeah, there we go. And then we'll stress, I'm in northeast Ohio, not Washington.
Well, you knew your word.
Ohio and parts further west where they put this kind of wood paneling on the main floor of a house. So I am, in fact, somewhat midwesterner now. And for those who I'll get to interact with in the future, I'm originally from Florida, so you'll hear a lot of more casual language from me normally. First of all, I actually want to address, not even as an answer, I agree with obviously everything Dan's projected so far, in particular to council member Johnson, if I'm getting it right, I really appreciated your commentary period. I would actually stress that I think you will enjoy taking a look at the values that Portland's representing on their current tool. I think it will help to answer not what necessarily may happen in the Met Council's footprint and beyond with regards to this project, but just to give an example of what kind of values that community decided to express in terms of measurement and where they kind of stand. So I think in some ways, you will probably help, give you one example of where this could go. With regards to Portland's progress so far and Lynn Peterson's excellent leadership over there, in fact, while we were doing this project, they changed their executive leadership, right? And as probably many folks know, on this specific call, famously, right, publicly elected in their case. So what's been great to see is the continuity on the project. As we've talked to some posts, in particular, the Met Council staff that we've really enjoyed meeting so far on this project. You know, Portland Metro, for the first time, submitted a $600 million housing bond that was voted on publicly there that could gain referendum-based support. And they're using the Economic Value Atlas to think about not so much where they choose those housing investments, although there's part of that, too. It's also to help explain to the public how it's reflective of their values, not just on more affordable housing for that region, but why they chose the areas they will. Right now, our colleague Jeff Rager, who in many ways is Dan's contemporary in the Portland setting, is working on their Southwest Light Rail Corridor, which may have some weird similarities and nomenclatures somewhere you all have in the region. They're taking a very specific equity focus on that and are actually, have created a whole new module on the tool to help, in that case, actually advance their planning on not only, of course, where the rail right-of-way is going to go. That's been, in some ways, long determined for them for a whole bunch of obvious reasons. But in fact, how they're thinking about zoning changes and in this new kind of business environment that we're all facing nationally, how can they make sure that they're offering support for small business entrepreneurs and the small businesses that are already there? So I just say all this to express between the values you can see online, a multiple in the hundreds of millions of dollars housing investment, to the orientation around a new light rail corridor, it's a really flexible toolset. It's going to allow you all to feel more confident in decisions you're making. And ideally, it allows a whole different set of conversations to happen, both internally to the Met Council and how you relate to those around you. And, you know, we are here to support, right? And we don't stay forever. We're not, we're not a consultant and we're not that kind of consultant. So we're here to truly support in a hopefully durable way. I'll just stress, this is also a really cool opportunity, as council member Johnson kind of questioned, I think, the right way of building out stronger relationships in the region than even the ones you already have. So it was really fun to work on the project in Portland. It's been really cool to see how it continues to have life. And as you saw in Dan's map, they wanted to keep working with us, which is always a good sign for the project overall. So we're excited to kind of embark on that process with you all in the region as well.
Great. Any more questions, comments, thoughts? Judy?
Thank you for indulging me, Mr. Chair. And as we, you know, first of all, I have to really appreciate, too, when I worked at Greater MSP and then, you know, in my local role, understanding the Met Council, there was always this weird space of, and even though it's noted in our Thrive 2040 documents, but, you know, how does the Met Council do economic development? There was always a little bit of head scratching because we're so community development oriented. And that's, you know, in part why Greater MSP was created, you know, about 10 years ago now. And now we're starting to see the intersection and there's always been partnership there, but this intersection. So going forward, from a governance mindset and point of view, how do we, you know, we don't have an economic development committee, I'm not saying we should, but how does this body of work show itself? Will it be just through council of the whole, through regular, just, you know, regular council meetings? Or will there be a working group with council engaged in this as we continue to move out? Because I know it will be very important that our local elected and appointed officials really, you know, embrace this, too. And I'm hoping that at some level, the data can get down to them because they're the ones that are really through the public process, putting their comp plans out there and trying to figure out where their local investments should go. So those are my questions on how do we, you know, get our arms around it through governance here so that we can be transparent in guiding it? And then how do we incorporate as we continue this process into the locals so it's useful for them in their planning purposes?
Councilmember Barber?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try and take a roundabout stab at this one, then Dan and Eddie can correct me if I'm wrong. But the, I was part of the group that started looking at some of this a while ago and looking at the Portland model. I really see this playing into whatever our new version for the regional framework, our next version of Thrive. But also, if you look really closely at the Portland tool, this is a tool that can be used by groups like us, it's a tool that can be used by the cities and the counties on a more local granular level. But I think it really plays into how we do our transportation and our housing planning because if you look at the conversation that, well, Judy and Robert, we were just in a conversation about transit planning and trying to connect jobs and people. Some of the key things that you look at, and if you look at their model, you can go down to, you know, access to labor market, access or mobility to certain areas, where you have target industries, things like that, where I think that especially as we're looking at how we're going to approach planning in this sort of new day and age, it could be a great interactive tool that I think that we can use. And it's just really complimentary to a lot of the things that we already have, especially with the local planning hand guide and all that stuff online. It's just one more tool in the toolkit that I think really helps both us but our local partners, too.
Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to quickly add, because I don't think it's been said before, but all of this data appears to be public data, but here it's in one spot. So it seems like it's a one-stop shop for dozens and dozens of different data sets. That's where I see the value.
You know, I think those are really great questions. And when we think about the next kind of regional economic plan, our plan, our vision, we've had in the past a family of plans, the water plan, the transportation plan, the land use, you know, and housing. And yet, look how integrated all those are. And so this doesn't belong in one particular committee. It is kind of informs, frankly, I think, all the work as we, as we think about our planning and our vision going, our values going forward. Also, one of the best things I've learned here is that Met Council provides such important tools for local governments. So this, in fact, becomes more instructive in helping those constituents where we're not the Economic Development Agency, we're providing the portal for those counties, cities to have access. And so I think that kind of the spirit of where we have some tremendous influence and offer aid as opposed to being the new urban overlords that some accuse us of being. Molly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm looking at the steps slide, and I think it's really, I think this work is really important. I think it's going to inform the work that we do on many levels and be very, very helpful and useful. In looking at this, it's a pretty aggressive timetable, which I think is good. I think we need to continue to advance this. I'm curious as to whether this timetable was developed pre-COVID or post-COVID or kind of where in that timeframe we are. Just wondering, engaging all of the stakeholder, identifying them and engaging them is going to be really, really challenging, and it is absolutely critical to underscore also what council member Johnson and others have said. I think we need to be really, really careful that we get many, many voices involved in this. But so many people and so many organizations are so involved with just dealing with what is happening day to day. So I think, I'm just wondering how you, how we can address that and continue to move forward and yet be sensitive of the fact that people are dealing with something that we've never experienced before.
And engagement fatigue as well. Yeah, great point, Councilmember. Dan, and do you have any thoughts on?
Mr. Chair, council member, I have just a memory of actually meeting people in person around this project. So it was.
Long ago.
At least inaugurated prior to COVID. This iteration is, has been going on at a distance. So it spans those two things. Your comment, though, or your suggestion about engagement, we're really tending to as close as we can. And it's the problem that fits a lot of the work that we're doing. We will do some hard thinking on that and report back. But engagement and what it does to the timeline, I think, is an interesting question.
Thank you. Just a follow-up, yes, it's definitely a balance between continuing to move it forward but not, not losing sight or letting any important voice drop off because they were consumed with something else in the moment. So I think we just need to be really aware and really cautious around, around the timing.
Thank you.
Great pause. Peter?
I was just going to add that, and since these are a bunch of databases, I imagine there's going to be a beta version of this rolled out in a year or so that we will all look over and that other, that you will socialize with other groups. And that. And that it could be modified in the future.
Dan?
It's not a static thing. You roll it out and then it's done.
Mr. Chair, Councillor, that's exactly right. The, this is one of the set of tools that the council staff is committed to creating and updating over time and improving. So if we look, if we read through Thrive, some of the deep paragraphs say things about developing tools to support regional conversations. This is one of those tools.
Any other questions, thoughts? All right, well, does anybody have any closing comments, Dan or Adi or others?
Mr. Chair, I just say thank you very much for all your thoughtful comments. You can expect more specific plans that you can look at. One of the slide, the last question I had was, what role would you like to play? And I'm taking your comments very seriously. And those are things you want to play in. And you'll be asked to do other things too.
Well, I, I really thank you, Dan and Adi. Thank you. Great to see you. And also, thank you all council members. I think we've kind of laid out some high expectations for not just the work that will be coming here from staff, but for ourselves to be engaged with it. And so that's one where we will have to, as they say, show up and encourage and be thoughtful about how we reach out to our various, you know, contacts and community to make sure that it's on the right path. So I know it's still a beautiful day out there. So unless anybody has any other business, I'm going to suggest we meet again next week. In the meantime, I hope you enjoy the afternoon. And with, unless I hear a rousing dissent, I will adjourn the formal meeting. Thank you all for everyone and look for